Town of Groton. Plan and Joint Commission meeting is coming to order. This is a special meeting. So I'd like to begin. We'll do a roll call. How?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Michael will be here in a few minutes. Kevin?
Here.
Lauren? And Clint?
Here. In person.
I appreciate that. I think I'd like to. Let me just see. I can see Clint until Michael gets here. I'll give you a moment if he's.
Thank you so much. Accepted.
Something really important. Okay, so before we begin, John would like to say a few words.
Okay, thanks, everybody. So, you know, Jeff Davis is here tonight to go over a number of things, kind of where we are with our plan of conservation development. Although you have not necessarily seen and heard a lot about it, other than some quick updates from staff. Staff working with the board have been doing a lot of work, a lot on looking at the baseline and doing a lot of public outreach, some focus groups and some other things about a thorough survey. Jeff will get into all those details, but really tonight he's going to go over the baseline report. Oh, yeah, sorry.
The shortest seat in the prime all time. My pleasure.
A baseline report and a number of results from the survey, some next steps, get a little bit of feedback. A lot of this is leading up to our main page, public outreach. Having again, the public has comments tonight. Workshop, we're happy to take comments and email from folks, but with that, I'll.
Just before maybe Jeff, don't mind before you start, I'd like to say thanks, Clint, appreciate your studies.
Any my pleasure, anytime.
Like to see. Thank you. Yes, it depends. How would you like to throw it up to staff? How would you like to do this? And thanks for bringing it up. He wants to do the cross correspondence.
Cross, you might, you might.
Or wait till.
It's attached to the packet. It's before the presentation. Knowledge it now.
Great, okay. I would like to acknowledge that communication. And I guess we'll consider that as part of any other written communication, or do you want us to say anything about it? All right, thank you. Okay.
Thank you for. Coming out tonight for a special meeting. I will try to keep this to 90 minutes since you can get out and enjoy some of this weather before the sunset. It is stunning. As John said, we have been doing a lot of work, I would say, an unusual amount of work for a P O C D or a comprehensive planner master plan at this stage. We have largely conducted more community engagement than I think a lot of communities will over the entire course of an update. And this is just the beginning. So as I was putting this presentation together, I was a little overwhelmed myself, saying, oh, my gosh, I'm going to. Completely overwhelm the B Z C tonight. So if if your eyes start blazing over, I'll try to be aware of that and move things along. But as John said, want to go over several things. One, an audit of your 2016 plan and the action items in that plan. I will go over the results of the kickoff survey, the online survey, go over the summary of the interviews. We conducted 26 community interviews over the over the winter and early spring. And then, as John mentioned, some of the ways from the baseline report, which we'll be releasing to staff and then to you very shortly. I think it's currently 160 pages. And so without maps, maps are coming in soon. So a pretty sizable document that sets just a baseline of where where the town is today. And as a reminder, the point of the baseline is to have all that information because you need all that information. But the goal at the outset of this was to have a plan, a P O C D, the main body that is more concise, that is more accessible to the public. So that's one of the ways we do that is having this larger baseline that has all that information that you need. And then making sure the base of the P O C D itself is more streamlined. So you're going to get to see the whole enchilada today, which is super fun. Let's see, is this working?
Is it on?
Is it on? Always first thing to check. It was not on. All right, so want to start very briefly with an update on accomplishments from the 2016 P O C D. If you've not received this already, and I apologize, I should know what was in your packets. We do have a spreadsheet that goes through each and every action. There are 93 actions in the 2016 plan. And staff helped us go through that and determine which of those are completed, which are not completed, which have been partly completed and which are ongoing. So things are just now the way you do business. On top of that, we looked at by staff's opinion, which of these things should stay in the plan for for the update? Which should not stand in the plan and which may need to stay in the new plan, but with edits. So that's those are things we would obviously like your your feedback on as well, but this was a first pass. But. So briefly, we divided this up into all the various topics. I won't go line by line. See, we we plaid out which which of these have been completed, not completed, partial, ongoing. And the bottom line is you've actually been doing really well over the last nine years. So completed 25.8%, which maybe doesn't sound like a lot, but when you add that to ongoing. So those are things you have completed, but they're the things that you're doing in an ongoing basis, not a one and done. It's nearly two thirds of the actions from the 2016 plan have been realized some way. About another 10%, you're on your way, you've started, but you aren't quite finished yet. So then we took a closer look at those that have not been completed yet, which is about 22%. And we asked again staff to look at those and think, all right, which of these? Do we think are still valuable and we haven't completed them yet, but these are still things we should be doing. And that dropped the number down to about 17 of the 93. Actions have not been completed yet and staff feels, yes, we didn't do them in the last nine years, but these are still valuable things that we should continue on into this plan. So again, we encourage all of you at your leisure to review that spreadsheet. If you would like to see in greater detail which actions have been achieved, which actions are remaining. But this is sort of our baseline for when we start building actions for the new plan. Start with these, the ones that are going to roll over and build from there. Next, I want to go over the results of the kickoff survey, the online and it was online and hard copy. So these these results represent both. There were 231 responses altogether.
Yes, Kevin.
That's a question. Do you want us, if you go through these different sections in transition, you want us to ask questions on each section or wait till the end?
You know what? You will be so glazed over by the end. Let's pause at the end of each one and take questions.
So if I could make an observation or a judgment. So, you know, when you look at this, kind of looking at, we had this kind of, which my words and morphic plan came together. A lot of new people had come together and they put together this big document, right? So it's very different, I think, than the creation of what we're now going down.
Yes.
Right? But what this does, this is like an old world corporate thing that when at the very end, 10 years down, check that we did it or we didn't do it. So what it lacks is the actions that is is not a, it's not a photograph. It should be a movie as far as the framework is concerned. So the question is, do you still believe that these are the type of metrics we should gauge at the end of 10 years that we've done well? Or do you find us as we're doing the actions that are requested within the P O C D that instead judge it more as an executable thing than at the end a scorecard?
I'm not sure I completely understand the question. I think there is value. And if you said, yes, we want to do these things and 10 years in the future, have we done them or not? Yes, that's valuable. I think, you know, a lot of other communities, a lot of communities will also have performance standards that aren't related to, do we do this yes or no? But what changed in the community as a result of these actions? So if, you know, if as a group, you want to think about what those things are, ways that you want the community to be different as your P O C D is implemented. Then we can work with you to develop performance standards. And so on top of, and I think the checklist is valuable, you want to know that you did the things you set out to do. But then taking a step beyond that, what, how is the, how's the community changed for better or for worse because of these accomplishments? Okay. If that if that answers your question.
John, I'm sorry. No, and then I think to build upon that, once we're done with the P O C D, we then use that as the roadmap for implementation actions for the next 10 years. So when we're working on different projects, they are not things that we're just dreaming up. We're looking to, oh, is this something that was in the P O C D? Thinking about the priorities that we heard from the commission over the development of that and was actually adopted. And some of the things that we heard in the community of what are those high priorities? And then we asked town council and R T M for funding or things that we can work on at the staff level. Or sometimes what might throw things out of order a little bit is if there's state or federal brands that we know can give us money to implement a project, which might have been a little bit of a lower priority. But it's something that we can get other money to do. Those are, that's kind of how then also set this as a roadmap for the next years of implementation. If you, I said, I think you're alluding to, it's not just, hey, did we accomplish it? It's how effective was it to set that for yearly, daily, weekly, et cetera? So I have no doubt that planning and zoning, which I've had great experience, will do that. Do you think the rest of the town is in alignment with where we are in the O C D right now, such as town council, town manager?
Well, I mean, I think a lot of the, anything that we take to them, we're bringing up if it's consistent or not with the planet conservation development. When we look at our capital improvement plan, you look at the town's capital improvement plan for budgeting. Your main task without is looking at that consistency with the P O C D. Is everything in town done consistent with the planet conservation development? Not necessarily. Is it something that we're always trying to work towards better? Sure.
But some of the projects of initiatives that are in the 2016 P O C D belong to public works or parks and recreation for implementation. And a number of those projects have been forward. Right. So some other other departments within the town.
Good.
And one of the things I see incorporating into the updated plan that you don't have in the 2016 plan is a governance section, for lack of a better word. Where we come up with a structure that the town agrees on to. Implement the plan and not not be, you know, let's look back at this 10 years from now and not do anything in between. But what do we do every year? How do we hold the different responsible parties accountable for what they said they were going to do every year? And give someone the authority to make those requests and whether that's this body or another body. So that's absolutely something that we're going to be working through this.
But I think the important thing is. It's having so many P O C Ds or so many of the goals are never even touched.
Sure.
Well, that looks pretty good on the paper anyway. But I think it'd be really good to know for each goal or each line that we're interested in, who's really responsible?
Yes.
And how's it going to get done? And I don't think, and have they bought into it?
Right.
I mean, it's not like we're here giving people jobs to do.
No, that's.
It'd be good and worth the time. It shouldn't take that much time. But let's really figure out who, you know, who is doing it, get a timeline and sketched out just something read by you. Of how we're going to accomplish it. And what was interesting, actually, I think it was the town of Westport, they actually get quarterly reporting back on their P O C D.
Oh, sure.
Goals. That's a pretty good discipline, you know? You don't want to do it monthly, you'd drive people crazy. But I think quarterly. Things about that.
No, I can very much see an implementation matrix that shows this is the responsible party. These are the supporting parties and and have a timeframe associated with that.
Period of performance.
Yeah, yeah.
And to back kind of what you were saying about the governance element and what Sue's saying is, do we have any quantitative metrics of approximately how long some of these? These goals have been taken to implement? So we have a good chunk that are ongoing, but are they ongoing because we just started them this year? And like, we're trying to get them in at like the last year of the period of performance? Or are those, you know, you know, I mean, like, we have huge gaps in time where we're not accomplishing anything. And then we're having these sprints, we're getting a lot done and could be maybe develop, I would say, like an average kind of lead time on on. When we can sell a property and when it turns into leasable apartments. And then from their gauge, how we even want to phase out some of the implementation? Because I think order of operations matters just as much as what we want to do.
True.
We wouldn't want to try to bring in a bunch of retail when we don't have the population to support it. I think that's been one of the concerns, right?
The retail will not come in if it doesn't have the population.
But trying to focus our resources there because it's a lower hanging, seems like a lower hanging proof. You know what I mean? That's, do we have any quantitative metrics like that that we're looking at?
Or maybe we should look at it. Why don't we get some?
Right.
Yeah, I like, I feel like a lot of the apartment building has been very much concentrated in these last couple of years as opposed to back in 2016. I mean, that's a feeling. I don't have that data.
Sure, I don't have that. I don't have that data either. And again, if we if we can build that annual check in or quarterly check ins into this next plan, then that will help you. You know, to have those metrics for the next plan.
Yeah, and I feel like just looking at some of the R P processes, they drag and they drag and they drag. And I'm always getting questions, when's that happening? I thought that happened two years ago and we're all going down. I mean, I'm thinking about 2016 Super Walmart just now getting turned into apartments 10 years later.
That's faster.
And some of that is tracked in the P O C D and some of that, you know, there are, you know, 1,001 reasons why a particular, a particular development project happens or doesn't happen and what the barriers are for any one of those. So I will say that the P O C D is generally not tracking progress at the individual development level, but more about what is your process for handling those things generally?
Did you like review any town policies that may be supporting those actions or getting in the way of our processing? That we have barriers, right? Or things, again, what do we do that helps actually accelerate some of that? That's also good so that we can try to.
So some of that's a little bit out of the scope. So I mean, I want to be realistic and set realistic expectations of things that we can do. Because even doing quarterly check ins on the P O C D, right now, the staff level pretty flat out. And I don't know how, you know, can we try to do more frequent updates on, you know, do I think I could commit to at least once a year? Definitely, probably maybe a little bit more than that. But again, I want to be realistic of that. And then, again, what is a plant conservation development? You know, overall guided document to the town, I think we're getting in this plan, we're going to be getting into more detail, doing more focus. You know, engagement and trying to set a clear path forward. But there's also, when it comes to the implementation, there are so many things that are outside of our control. We try to do, you know, we think about what's within the planning and zoning commission sphere of influence with zoning regulations and some other things. But a lot of these other, you know, excess properties and how long that takes, there's so many other influences on those those processes and budgetary things that. You know, again, I think we just got to make sure we're operating within what's.
I just wanted to know, a lot of the recommendations that are ongoing are a result of sort of wishy washy recommendations. There were a lot of recommendations that were continuing to support the water taxi. Yeah. So, yeah, so I hope we don't have that type of recommendation coming.
Yes, you know, right. Need someone with an angle. You probably want to get off slide three.
At least in the packet I downloaded today. But do we have that matrix? I didn't have the the spreadsheet that you were speaking about either that breaks.
Staff has that.
We do. It will be on greater run.
Okay. Could you email like a link to it?
I think.
I think the document's more of a guidance document.
Yes.
It's not a business document.
Exactly.
Right.
I think that's the important thing to note that the P O C D is your big picture. Where do we want to be in 10, 20 years as opposed to your capital improvement plan? Or, you know, you know, it's not your, it's not your budget. It is is the big picture, where do we want to go? And how do we make decisions about where we want to go consistently? So a lot of those details, we may have policies that help guide how you make those decisions, but not necessarily, you know. The the details for each development, yeah.
That's a fair point, but still, I'd like to ask everybody, whoever's responsible, if they buy into it, because if they.
Yes. And that is something we always do. If we're going to put someone down as the lead, all those are reviewed by that body. And if they say, no, I'm not going to do that, then we don't put it in the plan.
Go on, ask him one question.
No, no, but you are absolutely correct. And that is, that is a standard policy for us.
I don't want to keep you here for three hours.
Right. And we're going to try to keep it in 90. So kickoff survey, again, 231 responses. We find it's very important to ask demographic questions. We call them getting to know you questions. So just wanted to give you a sense of who those 231 people are, who are reaching in the community, who are not. And that doesn't invalidate the information we're getting in any way. It's just gives us context for who we're hearing from and who are not. So age, 31% were over 65, 17%, only 16% were under 35, 8% were women. The race and ethnicity broke down to about 75% white, quarter other.
What is the population?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
I mean, these numbers don't mean anything.
Well, I will, you know, I'll just, I will jump ahead to. This part, so this is where I will tell you about how they do not line up with where where there are groups are overrepresented and underrepresented.
Sorry, so the 231, that's about 0.6% of the population that got surveyed?
Yes.
I think that's more, are you asking for like numbers about? So 31% is about 72 people, right? Gotcha.
I thought it's a.
Okay.
Juxtaposed against what we actually have.
Start there and then go back to this.
See, it's like.
How many people over 65?
So obviously, it's small sample size. But here's where we saw disparities from your your overall population. So people under 35 were underrepresented, particularly people under 25 and teens were significantly underrepresented compared to the population overall. The Hispanic and Latino population was significantly underrepresented compared to their population overall. People making or households making less than 75,000 a year, underrepresented renters, underrepresented renters make up almost half of your population and only about 20% of the respondents. Women, interestingly, again, were almost 60% of the respondents, so that's overrepresented. People with a bachelor's degree or higher were significantly overrepresented, about 70% of people had a bachelor's degree or higher. And I think in Groton, the number is 30 something. So. A high percentage of people with a higher education. And then, this was interesting, I'll go back, one, and we asked where people live, Mystic, very overrepresented city of Groton and knowing following up. And the other neighborhoods in the community were were generally underrepresented compared with their populations.
But where is the population actually exist? And how many people in Groton percentage living in Mystic or knowing?
Well, I could pull that up for you. I don't, I didn't, I didn't put that up here.
These are meaningless unless you see that.
That would be helpful.
All right.
With the totals.
Absolutely. But it still provides a representation of what we did.
Right.
So it's not meaningless.
Oh, but if 50% of the people live in Mystic.
I get that.
Way out of line.
But it's 10%. Way from representation of sample.
This is the survey.
Yes. Not the population. Exactly. So we're just saying, generally speaking, who we've heard from, who we haven't, where we heard a lot from. I mean, certainly, a third of your population doesn't live in Mystic. It was, it was a little overrepresented.
Can I just, and I very much agree with Jeff because it's it's hard for me to contextualize a statement like especially underrepresented people under 35. But then elsewhere, it says that we have an aging population. So do we have an older population or do we have a younger population? Is are the under 35s 40% of our population, but only 16% responded? You know, those, those are the kinds of comparisons between who we are and who respond.
Yep. And I can, I can give you those specific numbers.
Like I can tell you just from experience, our district board is the largest by population and two people respond to that survey. One of them was Lauren Gothier and one of them was my six year old son. I can.
And he was one of the handful of people under 18.
And he was under 18.
Yes. Yeah. So I have all that information for for purposes of just letting you know generally what what kind of feedback we got and from where. So yes, we have all that data, just wanted to give you a broad sense.
Great, that one comment. So the geographies, it's impossible to. Population.
Right, because the census doesn't break down that way.
The geographies here, because the census tabulates at census tracts or at border groups and they don't align with how the town.
Right, so we could approximate, we couldn't.
We can ask somebody what census tract you live in and have that make sense. Asking them what neighborhood they live in is a logical way to do this. But we're giving up the ability to then compare it to population estimates at geographies as census tab.
So why wouldn't you do it by district level? Because we do it in town for R T M tabulation by district level. We've got seven districts and we know the populations of those districts.
I think also most people probably don't know off the top of their head what R T M voting district they're in, where people.
They know their polling location, it's like.
If they vote. So again, it's a lot more people know that they live in Mystic than their their voting district. We did it by fire district. Right?
You know, who pays taxes to.
It's our sample. It's what we represented for the moment.
Point being, we are not, this is not a scientific sample, is not enough people to be accurate to that level. So I just wanted to give you this information to give you a general sense of who we've heard from. So we know we're not, you know, obviously, we're not going to make decisions because these 231 people said these things. So this is just to give you a general sense of who we've heard from and what their perspective.
Every time that we do the P O C D or any kind of planning activity like this or plan, we're always trying to do a better job on engagement, outreach, communication. But we are not a statistics firm. We are not an outreach engagement and marketing specialist. So we do the best that we can. I'll tell you, the last P O C D had a lot less respondents overall. You know, we weren't, you know, and a lot of those numbers were used that, okay, X amount of the percentage of people responding to the survey thought this. And that did help weigh some of the things that the commission at that time took into consideration for decisions. So again, we're trying to get a better representation of the community. And we're also just trying to identify, you know, broader brushstrokes. Who's underrepresented and how can we do a better job reaching some of those people that we don't see at all? Or that we don't normally hear from. So again, not statistically significant, but it's something that, you know, just like at most of our meetings, who shows up? Be a buttless, but we don't care from other people in the community that might have same similar or varying opinions. So it it's not a perfect process. We're trying to do the best that we can.
I do think the number of organizations that you talked to was really unusually high and really good diversity. Now, you got some good feedback.
We got some wonderful feedback and it was, I think it was worth the extra effort, honestly. All right. So just to go over some of the results from that kickoff survey. So we asked five questions, five basic questions. The first one being, what is one thing you love about Groton? So quickly, the major things, and this is in rough order of prominence of a number of times that these issues were referenced. Access to the water and shoreline, natural beauty and open space, the sense of community, the small town atmosphere, your recreational opportunities. A lot of people appreciate the location, the convenience to Boston and New York. Fact that you have a mix of urban and rural in the same place and that diversity. Your education, your public schools, your libraries, the fact that you have a lot of resources that are family friendly and age friendly. So the Thrive 55 plus community center, the parks and playgrounds and so forth. And that you have a strong historic cultural heritage. We did, because we asked these demographic questions, we tried to see, all right, were there different types of responses based on different demographics? And really was age that tended to. Based on different demographics and really was age uh, that tended to uh, produce the uh. Different differences in um, um, the feedback. Uh, so for younger residents, uh, they particularly valued access to restaurants and social spots and the communal aspects of Groton. Interestingly, the uh, twenty-five to forty-four and the fifty-five plus, both younger and older adults. Appreciate the town's access to water, hiking trails, uh, and other natural spaces in the environment. And that between the forty-five to fifty-four, uh, we're really focused on your geographical advantages. Uh, and accessibility to uh, jobs, shops and services.
Millennials and the boomers are hand in hand.
Exactly. That was, that was a really fun and interesting perspective. Uh, one thing that uh, about Groton that you want to change. Um, so this was across the board, uh, blight. Uh, people are concerned about empty stores, rundown shopping centers. Vacant buildings, uh, that was very common. Um, traffic and road safety, uh, so that there's too much speeding, uh, need for safer roads for all users. Uh, so bikeability, walkability. Uh, more affordable housing options, uh, was a very common theme. Um, development beautification, which really goes hand in hand with the first one on blight. Uh, where people want to see more investment in existing buildings, uh, beautifying, uh, one. Uh, just improving the aesthetics of the community. Uh, having more green spaces and outdoor recreation spots, uh, better communication. Uh, with and from the uh, town officials, uh, and government in general. Uh, having more community spaces, opportunities for people to gather. Uh, transparency and responsiveness of local government. Business quality and this, it's almost comical, but everywhere we go, people are talking about the car washes. Uh, it's, it's a real thing, uh, even though John has done a great deal of work to uh, demystify that. Um, increase in uh, infrastructure sidewalks, bike paths and so forth, and having more even family oriented activities. So again, when we uh, looked at these results by demographics. Uh, women tended to be uh, particularly concerned about uh, infrastructure improvements and community aesthetics. Uh, and revitalization. Men were uh, more uh, likely to mention economic development and business growth. Uh, for those younger adults, uh, really want more things to do, were focused on social spaces and entertainment options. Uh, that thirty-five to fifty-four were really concerned about housing. Uh, particularly housing that is affordable for them and ways to invest in their uh, homes, their existing homes. Uh, for the fifty-five to sixty-four group, uh, they want enhanced safety, connectivity, pedestrian-friendly infrastructure. And that is a typo. That last one should be sixty-five plus, uh, was improved aesthetics in the community, higher quality development. In line with the town's history and a reduction in traffic noise. Uh, so some of these uh, are not terribly surprising. But it is interesting to see those differences of opinion depending on uh, age and gender in this case. Uh, third question, what is one thing you really want to see in Groton that is missing? Uh, so again, we go back to that better economic development, people wanting stores, services, restaurants. Uh, that, that reflect their needs. Um, a lot of people feel that they have to leave Groton to get the things that they want. Uh, some other uh, common things, a community pool or splash pad, more movie theaters. Uh, again, those bike lanes and sidewalks, cultural activities. And generally better connectivity, particularly all the assets of downtown, uh, the government center and so forth. Again, when we look at uh, differences by demographics. Uh, the younger adults uh, are really prioritizing again recreational and social activities. Uh, the twenty-four, uh, twenty-five to thirty-four demographic, uh, looking for better retail dining options. Um, fifty-five plus expanded healthcare and wellness facilities. Uh, so again. See, as your stages of life, uh, continue, you have different priorities. Uh, interesting, I thought, uh, for homeowners, uh, under this question. The, the strongest desire was for better retail options and uh, entertainment. Uh, whereas for the renters, it was more things that are, are, um. You don't have to spend your money on, uh, so uh, community resources like parks and the splash pads, uh, and a more affordable housing options. So I may not go through all of these, because again, your, your eyes are going to start blazing over, but uh. The next two questions, uh, we asked people to list three words, uh, one that describes, uh, what Groton is like today. And the fifth question was what you want Groton to be like in the future. And uh, I will say again, eighteen to twenty-four is a small sample size, which leads to. Uh, what you're seeing here with the uh, over predominance of boring. Almost all of them did. Uh, and interestingly, boring will be a theme throughout all age groups, uh, which we'll, we'll, we shall get to. Um, and, and this instance, I will just point out that high uh, refers to high rents. High insurance and other high cost of living is what that high was.
Not the recent campus like.
Eighteen to twenty-four, really worried about high insurance rates?
That, that came up. I promised, I've not, not making this up. So we, I, I dived in, I dived into the data to see what, what, when people said hi, what were they talking about? At least one person said insurance. So get to the twenty-five to thirty-four age group, see, uh, boring is, is still up there. Uh, on the other hand, many people were noting the fun things uh, to do in the community. Uh, we'll start seeing diverse, diverse pops up, uh. Everywhere, a lot of, a lot of age groups, uh, really, uh. Feel that uh, it, it, the town is diverse today, consider that to be a good thing. Um, this age group generally considers the town to be safe, uh, but they are concerned it is undeveloped and has a lot of vacant buildings. And uh, while the words expensive and affordable are both common, more often not respondents were talking about a lack of affordability. Uh, in this case. Uh, for the uh, age thirty-four or thirty-five to forty-four. Again, bore uh, is still a pretty common response. Um, however, the responses for this age group were a lot more varied, uh, than for younger adults. And uh, there's more of a positive association with natural beauty, the convenient location. And it being a good place for families and a place that is well-run. Uh, you'll see the word dependent up at the top, uh, that was generally associated with car dependent or auto-centric. As opposed to walkable or bikeable. So that was something that people were not a fan of. Um, many people use the word to describe Groton as poor, rundown or messy. And uh, some people noted Groton as expensive or unaffordable. Uh, when we looked at ages forty-five to fifty-four, uh, like many of the other groups. This group really noted diversity. That's the word that really pops out is something that they value and see as a relevant in the town today. Uh, the age group also sees a lot of potential in the town, uh, acknowledging however, that there are rundown, vacant and depressed areas. Uh, and interestingly, the older people get, the less of a bore the town is, however, or still does show up under this uh, age category. And this category was actually uh, the least likely to mention uh, unaffordability or expense as an issue. And of course, these are people at the prime of their earning.
Can we know what the beautiful shit is? Together or separate?
Where?
They're shifted. Oh, shifted. Yeah, they should. So that is a package together.
I don't think it's beautiful.
Oh, no, 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 no. Those are two different words. Uh, and I had, I had one of my staff. I have one of my staff go and uh, uh, try to scrub out any naughty words and we missed that one. Thank you for putting.
I mean, I think it speaks to the, the passion of that response of it.
Yes. Yes, that it actually showed up in the word cloud. Uh, for ages fifty-five through sixty-four, uh, again, this group, uh, diverse really comes up. That's a, a value for the town. Um, interestingly, this group was more likely to suggest that the town is segregated. And when they were talking about segregation or division, uh, they tended to be talking about, um. The diversity of the town not being well-integrated, that it was uh, clustered in, in, in pockets as opposed to being uh, diverse everywhere. Uh, so a lot of people mention Mystics. You'll see Mystic uh, is one of the, the topics here or one of the large words. And so a lot of people were talking about, well, Mystic is nice, but the rest of the town. Um, this group also noted that Groton is expensive. Um, perhaps again, as they're reaching retirement age, that's becoming more of an issue. And again, a lot of people concerned about trying to think rundown, dirty or dated. Then we get to sixty-five plus, which is perhaps the biggest diverse. Uh, so again, I, I love this because in the, actually in a lot of communities, that this is stereotypical, but the, the sixty-five plus age group isn't really crazy about diversity. Um, and it was really cool to see the, uh, uh, the sixty-five plus crowd really, uh. Uh, respects that, uh, thinks of the town as being beautiful and friendly, uh, and safe. Um, boring pops up its head a little bit again, um, as does expensive and costly. Um, and again, a small amount agree that it's rundown, dumpy, abandoned or empty. Uh, so even though there was uh, some diversity in opinions, there was a lot of consistency from one age group to another on these opinions.
So could, could I just ask quickly?
Of course.
When we say diverse, are we talking specifically about like racial or ethnic diversity? Are we talking about socioeconomic diversity?
All across the board. So some people were specifically talking about ethnic diversity. Some people were specifically talking about socioeconomic diversity. Um, yeah, uh, it really was, and, and. People talk about in, in a positive way when they're mentioning. Uh, so then we asked people, what are three words that describe what you would like Groton to be in ten years? And uh, if you look again, eighteen to twenty-four, um, in brief. These respondents want a town that's more attractive, has more things to do and is more affordable. At least you, there was more a diversity of words for that, that time.
It wasn't anything.
There wasn't, there wasn't anything that really popped out in this one. It was, uh, just, uh, it was. Why did diversity of responses? Um, yes.
Was there an eighteen to, to twenty-four? Because we jumped right to twenty-five to thirty-four here.
The last one.
Yeah.
I, I read it differently, sorry.
And then for twenty-five to thirty-four, um, a more affordable community is desired by this age group. Uh, would also like to see the town continue to be diverse as well as more attractive, walkable, safe, clean and sustainable. Uh, for thirty-five to forty-four, uh, better safety and affordability were the top hopes for this age group. Uh, in addition, they hope for a friendly community that is walkable, green, good for families and thriving. Uh, for forty-five to fifty-four, this is where issues of health, uh, start to uh, pop up. Uh, so a healthy community was very important. Also hoping for a community that continues to be diverse and is vibrant, clean, beautiful, green, walkable. And family friendly. And again, this age group was least likely to suggest that Groton should be more affordable in the future. These are the people at the peak of their earning potential. Um, for ages fifty-five through sixty-four, affordability uh, becomes the dominant concern for this group into the future. Uh, they do continue to appreciate Groton's diversity, uh, but add the word inclusive for the future, wanting a more inclusive diversity. Uh, hoping for a future that is clean, safe, green, beautiful, vibrant and resilient. And again, you start to see those words as commonalities across all the issues. Uh, and finally, sixty-five plus. Uh, again, affordability tops the list for the town's future. Affordability is really on uh, everyone's minds. Uh, across most categories and uh, this group seeks a future that is safe, vibrant, welcoming, friendly, walkable, sustainable and green. Again, you start hearing those things over and over again. Uh, so with that, I will. Pause. Anyone has any additional questions or thoughts about those results?
So I like to start this. So my observation, John, this really falls on your shoulders now. Because in essence, gotta be broad, you've got to go to Trader Joe's. Car washing is tremendous as far as their business models, car wash, Trader Joe's, right? Car wash, had a bunch of them. So you need to sell that affinity, John. We've already spoken.
And until there's a lot more, they're not coming.
Exactly.
There's a lot more.
Houses. General population.
Population, they, they look at growing, like, there's a number of factors. We could do. One of the times we have a point here, we can talk about, uh, some of the things that retailers look for, but it's rooftops and growth. And right now, we're pretty stagnant and, you know, some of the community conversation meetings that we've had, we've talked about changes in demographics and how. Well, why do we need more houses if our population is stagnant or going down because our household size keeps getting smaller and smaller? So we need more housing units to actually house our population. And, you know, again, that gets into the whole housing growth and that, that's more of a conversation.
But it did show up in the fifty-five and beyond that, that they're very concerned about affordability.
Yes.
And I think they're, they're, they feel they're getting pushed. I would say, this is my observation, probably getting pushed out of it, but they can't afford it.
Well, and there's a few things in, one of the next projects that we're going to be working on, we did some interviews today, looking at missing middle housing. And that is actually, you know, covers a lot of different price points and also a lot of different pop, uh, age populations. Because one of the problems we have is as our community is aging, many people want to age in place. They're still in their house. That is probably too big, um, and not the right design for where they are in life. Yet there's no choice for them to go anywhere else because we're not, yes, we're building some apartments, but there's not a lot of diversity in housing choice. And a lot of that is on us, the zoning regulations, financial incentives and a whole slew of things that we'll get to in a much deeper dive outside.
Sure.
Thank you. Like how, when you look at all of these things, it'd be interesting to put them all on one page. For me, anyway, visually and try to identify what I would describe as the keystone species.
Yeah.
So that, you know, it's that one animal that you kill and then the whole environment collapses. Kind of thing. And that, can you go through this and, and try to identify those? Items that might, you know, it, it's like, it doesn't make any difference if you create a lot of jobs, if the town is terribly boring.
And that's what's happening now. You have a lot of jobs and a lot of people who take those jobs don't live here.
Well, and some of it, well, that's it, right? And then, and so that I think that it's not that build it and, I mean, maybe it is, build it and they will come.
Right.
Kind of a thing and, and try to identify and then, and one of them is probably jobs. And one of them is probably, I mean, it looks to me like recreation.
Yeah, fun things to do.
And focus on those items that, and then everything else is just. Kind of like gonna survive in this and flourish in this environment.
Yeah.
That has jobs and, and uh, quality of life.
Yes, yeah, that quality of life and is a huge theme in this. And I think, you know, the more investments the town can make, and you have, uh, there's a ways to go. Uh, and I think that's one of the, the top things we've heard, like there's just so little investment, particularly in the commercial corridors here. And uh, how do we, how do we unlock that? Uh, and part of that is. More housing that attracts people who are actually gonna live here and take the jobs that are, are here. Uh, that can support those businesses and support the reinvestment. Uh, but yes, I think there's a whole series of.
Well, I don't think we have to like try to solve all of.
No, no, no.
But it's just the one or two. I know.
Yeah.
Myself, my wife and I will go to Westerly to go to restaurant.
Of course, yeah, that's very common.
There's, and, and because sometimes it's a little, like in Mystic, it's a little hard to get.
Sure. There's so many tourists now.
I mean, I, I think that goes with what John was saying, right? It's.
Yeah.
The housing, it's the, the keystone species.
Yeah, housing is absolutely a keystone species.
You get the, the people here, living here, they don't want to drive all the way to Westerly for a good restaurant. So the restaurant sets up here. You know, the, the axe throwing place that you go to on the weekend with your buddies sets up here, whatever it might be. Maybe we'll get a rope skating rink back. I hear that from a lot of people. You know, so I think housing is probably that keystone species.
Hundred percent.
You know, one of the economists that we've spoken to recently, not even doing workforce here now. Said really, there's two ways to help revitalize and grow a downtown. It's more housing or people with more disposable income.
Yep.
And, and that's what it comes down to, of, of what we're looking at. Until we have some of that, and I mean, one of the things we even heard, which was a, a little staggering reminded of is. A number of years ago, um, we kind of looked at housing sales, and this was even before COVID. And I, I wanna try to see if we can go back and look at these numbers to see shortly after purchase. How many like major renovation building permits were being pulled in somewhere between twenty-five and thirty-three percent of all house sales had. That type of activity happening back in two thousand and sixteen. I'm gonna guess that number is probably, that percentage is probably increased. And we're actually starting to approach a market where a lot of what we think of right now is our uh, entry level starter housing. Is actually approaching a tear down market because things are getting so expensive here. And if we're not addressing housing at all price points, the people with resources and money that want to live here, buy that house. Outbid everybody else in that middle market, tear it down and rebuild what they want to build. So again, as we think about what want Groton to be over the next ten years. Whether it's a Trader Joe's, you know, fixing downtown Brian, you know, along with one. There's a lot of things at play, but you know, again, we keep talking. There's a lot of things at play, but you know, again, we keep kind of coming back to this. Housing, the town is putting a ton of money into recreation improvement, subpar, you know, through and and kind of through that. Or the pickleball courts going in behind the library. So again, not completely, but there's a, there's a lot of.
Okay, okay. Uh so next I want to uh go over uh the results of the interviews. Uh that we uh conducted throughout the community. Uh so again, there were twenty-six uh groups, organizations uh that we met with. Uh and that was uh our firm plus, uh there's always at least one uh uh person from OPDS. Uh as a part of those conversations and um. The uh organizations ranged from nonprofits, churches, schools, uh people providing municipal services, uh. Healthcare homelessness uh really, really ran the gamut. Uh and we've listed all of them here. Again, I will not go through all of them, but uh that is all um. On record on the uh greater rotten website. And uh again, uh town staff can send you the link. Uh but it was a really, really wonderful opportunity and I I'm often not given the opportunity. Most communities will not let me take the time. To do this. Uh so it was really um. Special opportunity for me and my team uh to really get to know a lot of these organizations that are uh doing such wonderful work. In Groton. Uh so I'll try to do this uh very quickly, but just to give you a sense of the major themes. That we heard from those interviews. Uh housing was probably uh the number one thing that came up. Uh specifically the high cost of housing, the low availability of affordable housing. Uh the effects on seniors, you do have an aging population and so more and more seniors. Uh particularly as they are hitting the point where they're on fixed incomes are uh experiencing displacement. And uh are at risk of homelessness uh more than ever. Uh there is a trend of outside investors buying uh older housing stock, whether it be single family homes or smaller apartment buildings. Re-investing in them uh and displacing lower income residents. And this isn't a bad thing in of itself. It's good that people are coming in and reinvesting in uh your existing housing stock. Uh but there aren't those naturally affordable options that are being replaced. Uh so there are fewer and fewer places for uh lower income people to live.
One more question. I was curious how you get that statistic. Um how many are?
This is anecdotal. I will, I will, I will start with that. These are the anecdotes that we are receiving from these interviews. Is what you're seeing here. So there are certainly things we need to follow up on and uh verify. Uh so that that would be the caveat for everything I'm about to tell you. It's a summary of what we have heard from these groups. Cost of living, uh like a close second, uh and overall concern about the economy, including inflation. That's more and more expensive for people to buy their daily needs and that's a verifiable fact. That vulnerable populations are uh more and more people are are close to homelessness. And again, this is anecdotal. A lot of the social service agencies in the region and that they are dealing with caseloads that they have never experienced before uh in decades of work. Um and that uh poor residents are often needing to prioritize certain essentials over others. So we're finding that they're they're finding that more of their clients are uh making decisions between food and rent and and healthcare. And are having to cut back on on things. And even people who are now, you know, dual income households would have been fine a few years ago. Uh in terms of transportation, this was another one that rose higher on the list than I expected. This was a topic of conversation for a lot of people that uh reliable transportation is deeply needed. Um either for people who have to drive and do not have access to a reliable automobile, uh and also increasing. Uh the frequency um and spread of public transit. Uh this was particularly important uh when it came to seniors. A lot of people who work with the senior population mentioned transportation as a number one issue. Uh including being able to combat isolation and foster community engagement as well as help people. Get to medical appointments, uh buy food and so forth. Um similarly for uh low income residents in general. And a general need for improving pedestrian networks and connectivity and accessibility. That there's some of that now and there's been a lot of work around connecting the trail system, uh which is great for recreation and mobility. Uh but generally need to continue that work. Uh accessibility. Uh so we did speak with a number of people who work with uh the disabled community. And there was a desire to make parks and other public spaces more accessible to everyone. Uh with the thought being that if you've got uh a space that's uh accessible for someone in a wheelchair, it's accessible for everyone. And also a need for more resources for uh families, children with disabilities. Uh to help them plan for their post-high school transitions. Um specifically young people's health, uh when we talk to people who are working in uh the mental health and the public health fields. Uh there's a concern that there's a rising issues of uh anxiety and other mental health issues in teenagers and and younger children. And uh students who are um uh dealing with struggling with substance abuse. Uh there are a number of uh organizations we talked to that really wanted to improve relationships with town government. But I will say of all the communities I've worked in, um the town of Rodden gets really high marks across the board. Uh most of the groups we talked to say that uh town staff are approachable, they are uh action oriented. They uh collaborate, uh are willing to uh provide resources. Uh so honestly, you've got very high marks as a community for your responsiveness to uh community groups.
But town government is town employees, not elected employees. Was there any distinction that came up there at all?
A bit. Um there, there were some people who uh differentiated. I think for the most part. Most organizations' interactions were with town staff uh and boards and commissions, volunteers. Um but certainly, I think a lot of people did note that town leadership, elected leadership. Was supportive of their efforts and were always really good about helping them find financing when needed uh and partnering. Um so.
Sure.
More positive than than not uh overall, for sure. It was interesting that there are, there are a lot of people in, people who are uh uh. Involved in their churches or other nonprofits or our boards and commissions, like you all tended to be more involved in other town processes. Um so it's like there's a core group of people who are just like hyper involved and uh wear a lot of different hats and volunteer for a lot of different organizations. Um and then there's a contingent that tends not to, that tend to be disconnected from a lot of things. And you found that the 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 fewer connections people had, the less likely they were to um. Understand how town government works and uh know how to how to get things done. A few other things related to relationship with town government. That was one person I probably, that was one example. Um but the town's public facilities, people were very supportive of. Uh the senior center, the Groton Library. Um a lot of people, again, express gratitude for funding they've received from the town. And uh many interviewees uh would like to invite town leaders to. Come to their events, understand their organizations better, their doors are always open and they really want to foster a good back and forth relationship. Uh communication methods came up uh again, and I I think again, this is going to end up being a pillar in the plan. Uh because it it has come up so often, uh but people wanting uh a multi-pronged approach to hear about what's going on in the town. Uh so coordinated social media, email blast, newspaper articles. Um and and hear from a a bunch of different places. So a lot of people feel like they don't know where to find information about what's going on in town. Um and all the interviewees, all the different organizations, like, hey, it can help, we can be a part of. Uh getting the word out to our members, our congregants and so forth. Uh so they're all very willing to help town with communications. And uh, oh hey, I forgot about this one. There was uh several people who recommended a series of short YouTube videos to engage more young people. And this is something that town staff is actively working on right now. Um so just a number of ideas from uh these groups on how they can better uh be involved in in town government. Uh so in terms of resources uh offered uh by these organizations, they are happy to disseminate information and resources for the town. Happy to meet with town staff or uh boards and commissions at any time. Um offer invitations to participate in community uh organization or organizational events uh and so forth. Uh what they request is uh more centralized information, a centralized uh event calendar. Um help with outreach and a better understanding of how zoning changes are made. Uh there are a number of people, of course, who are uh very supportive of of housing diversity. I'm wondering how they can best advocate for that. Uh so in terms of next steps from those interviews. One thing that we've been doing, uh as I mentioned, uh we had two focus groups yesterday, which invited a lot of these. Uh interviewees to come together and uh bounce ideas off each other. And we tried really hard to uh have a diversity of perspectives at each of those focus groups. So uh environmental advocates are there with housing advocates who are there with mental health advocates and and so forth. Um so they can all hear from each other, these various things that they were uh sharing with us individually. So that uh I I think was one of uh the best things to come out of these. Um but the whole point. Beyond even what's going on with the P O C D is that the town is uh developing and maintaining ongoing relationships with these organizations. Uh so communication is good for whatever happens in the future uh outside, outside this um planning process. Alright, so I will pause there before I start talking about baseline report, do a time check. Alright, let's do it. Alright, so I will, I will go through baseline reports uh really quickly. Uh but just again, I gave you the uh background on what the baseline report is when we started this uh presentation. At the May eighth meeting, one of the things that we will be presenting to the public are these key takeaways. So again, this is a long document, hundred and sixty plus pages. Uh we don't expect. Many, if any, people to read through the entire thing. Maybe you all will. Um but we're trying to really distill that into the key takeaways for several major. Topics, and that will be among the things that we present uh on May eighth. I will go over some of the demographics, uh because I think this is interesting and important. Population has decreased slightly since two thousand. Um so the twenty twenty-three estimate is about thirty-seven thousand people. I think the twenty, the two thousand estimate was like thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand. It's just a very slight decrease. Um but most Connecticut municipalities have also slightly decreased. So this is actually very common across the state. Um brought is aging, as we said earlier, uh the median age increased by eleven percent in the last decade. Uh the that I will add there. However, compared to your neighbors, you still have a higher percentage of school age children. Um so even though uh that population is decreasing and the the senior population is increasing. Compared to your neighbors, you still have a pretty strong base of families with children.
That that includes Navy.
And that includes Navy, absolutely. That absolutely makes a huge difference.
Yep. The median age, do we have an average, do we have a median?
I can pull the average age. I I don't have that in front of me, but.
Interesting balance.
Yeah. Uh the population is becoming more diverse. Hispanic Latino population is up to ten point three percent. Uh Asian, six point four percent, uh black, five point three percent. Uh so there. Go back to that, those earlier slides and see how that compares to the the people who responded to survey. Um again, pretty wide scale, almost forty percent of residents have bachelor's degrees or higher, although about seventy percent of the survey respondents did. Uh the average household size is decreasing, which is one of those things that's driving that trend toward a need for smaller housing sizes.
Sorry, what is the average household size right now?
Uh I don't have that number in front of me, but I can absolutely get that for you.
Because that's a conversation that comes up a lot with apartments is especially talking to families who can't afford. While the rentals here are one bedroom or two bedrooms, not good enough for me and my two kids, right?
Yes. You have in front of you? For household and family is higher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a lot of couples.
Lot of couples without kids.
Just. Increased households, you have to increase.
Right, number of units.
Well, you uh use that number, forty percent of residents bachelor's degree or higher. Twenty-five percent of them are under eight.
So that number is specifically for residents of years twenty-five and older.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that doesn't count the people, the adults who are maybe in college right now or not. So your median income eighty-two thousand, uh which has been increasing significantly, but still behind Connecticut as a whole. And no, I don't have the Connecticut number off the top of my head. Um you do have a higher proportion of veterans than Connecticut as a whole. Again, perhaps no surprise, I give the subbase. Uh and we're also looking at your environmental justice block groups, uh which are centered in the western parts of town, including Center Groton, Quantico Bridge and City Groton.
Who are those?
Uh who are the uh, uh so the the state has a definition and I should know this off the top of my head. Uh but is basically um census tracts where a certain percentage or higher of people living in poverty. And or uh non-white populations live.
Is that what that meant?
Yes.
Okay.
No.
Yes.
I didn't know what environment.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, so the environmental justice community is is a state definition uh for basically looking at low income and uh uh non-white concentrations.
I thought it was pre-huggers.
Thank you, thank you for making me pause and define that. I appreciate that.
Which I'm for, by the way.
Includes what's planned value.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Um in terms of key issues around land use that we're picking up, and this should be no surprise. Uh this issue of balancing conservation and development is going to be an ongoing uh discussion throughout this process. Um I think it's going to be really important to continue to look at your performance standards. Uh for determining which lands to preserve or prioritize for conservation uh and and which are more appropriate for development. Uh because obviously there's, there's going to be more of both uh in the community. Uh we will be looking at needs to change zoning regulations further. Uh that one thing that, what? Yeah, again, maybe we'll find out, maybe we were perfect. But I mean, actually, a lot of, a lot of the uh successes, uh the concrete successes from the twenty sixteen plan. Uh were related to your uh desires to change certain uh aspects of zoning and you were very successful that. Uh so this actually may be a smaller portion of this time, depending on uh what we unfold. I will continue, uh we'll go through all of this. Uh housing, again, some of the major takeaways, no surprise. Uh we're in a housing crisis, uh housing production is at historic lows, uh there are high costs of homeownership and renting. Uh we talked about already, the aging population, fewer opportunities for people to downsize. Uh also a concern about gentrification. Again, this is uh, we're gonna look for more uh statistics about this. But uh Camoin Associates, who has done a lot of the economic analysis and research around housing and done a number of reports for you. Uh has found this to be true, uh that uh properties are being bought up, renovated, rents are increasing accordingly. There continues to be this mismatch, as John was saying, between housing needs and the housing types. Uh so a lot of seniors in particular are living in these larger houses that are no longer um the best need for them, best fit for them. Um according to Camoin as well, uh as of twenty twenty-three, there's a housing market demand for up to six thousand four hundred and fifty new units. Over the decade, rents have increased nineteen percent since the pandemic. And uh thirty percent of Groton's households are cost burden, which means they're spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing.
What is that, six thousand? It's not realistic when you look at a population of thirty thousand people. No, but is it a regional, is that sixty-four hundred?
Is that for Groton? That was for Groton. And so.
Is it because Groton is driving that, but we don't expect that number? We aren't gonna put in six thousand.
So that's.
That's something that the town needs to figure out, but also so as part of this. Housing study that we're going to be getting under contract sometime soon, not only are we gonna relook at those numbers for Groton. We're also gonna look at those numbers for the surround, so people can get a perspective of if the number is sixty-four hundred for Groton. What is that number for Stonington, for Leggird, for Norwich, or New London? Because some of the comments we've gotten is, we don't need more housing here. Put it all in, you know, New London needs to take more of it. Stonington needs.
Because some of the comments we've got is, well, we don't need more housing here. Put it all in, you know, New London needs to take more of it. Stonington needs, they need to take their own numbers too. And it's not, you know, well, if they build all of theirs, we still don't need ours.
So because of jobs in Bro.
You're like, is there an algorithm, John?
Yeah, so I mean, I want to do a very detailed study, which we've actually gone over before with the commission, we presented publicly on, we have all that data. Spend more time going over that again. It's demographics. Some of it is employment growth. It's not changing the percent of commuters that would come here. So we have what, twenty-seven thousand jobs in Bro? Eighty-two percent of those people commute here. That sixty-four hundred units would not change the commuting percentage. This is what, based on what, where we are, demographic, where we're change, where we're growing, changing natural growth, where things wanna go. And this is a New England and a national problem. Why is our population not necessarily going home? Because we're not building enough. So some of it is, if you build it, will they come? They'll build the dreams there or build it. But if you build it, they will come. But, you know, for a while, that's what we thought it was. We're seeing, you know, I think there's been a lot of focus on the apartments. The only real apartments we're seeing under construction is Trader Square. We see that. We've given approvals for others. We haven't issued building permits for those others yet. Until hammers are swinging, we can't count on those units.
Yeah, just a related question. You assume a hundred percent bill, a hundred percent occupancy of every house that's built, correct?
Yeah.
You, do you assume a hundred percent occupancy of every apartment building that exists?
I'd have to go back and ask Camoin what their assumptions were. So our occupancy rates are incredibly high, so there's never a hundred percent occupancy, because if you sell your house during the time when you sell it, somebody else, there's a period of empty.
Yeah, but I know.
I think, I think it's three percent, like two twenty percent vacancy rate right now.
Yes, which is incredibly low. That's, that's an unhealthy low occupancy rate.
I would imagine that if we dropped six thousand units over the course of a year, they would. Over the, well, since the course of a decade, but come on. That's, we're behind the curve on that, right?
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think it'd be really good for everyone who hasn't read the coin study, which is online and.
It's a really good.
Take a look at it. I have a lot of questions about too, maybe when I have session on these days.
Right, because it's shaped what we're doing here, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, we're coming away with this, I'm coming away with this for the moment. This opinion that the key to our success in Bro is housing and affordable housing. It's just that simple. I mean, we all probably read Sarah, what's the Bronin's book, Keys to the City in Hartford, so how zoning shapes the community, right? And to me, we're starting to come up, if we get that now, this is not some, we're not a politician saying, oh, we need more for, we're saying, how do we precisely grow our town into what we want it to be? And the key to me, it's all about housing. It's all about housing. Everything else falls in line with the house, right? So a better understanding, like, maybe we do it after. That's one of our issues.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, as John mentioned, there is this other missing middle housing project that's going to be happening. Um, and whatever team is working on that, we will be partnering with very closely, and that will be integrated into this, and I would love for Camoin to come to the P C C and uh give you a refresher on on the methodology for that report.
John, is there a way to know if, say, that number was achieved in ten years? What would our pop, like, so would our population grow?
A little bit.
Or would the uh number of people per household shrink significantly? Because, I mean, sixty-four hundred units is representative of thirteen thousand people, right?
That are. And some of that will be existing households uh being dispersed through new housing types. Uh, so it would not be.
The number of people per household is got, I mean, it's a math problem, right? This is a math problem.
Yeah, so it will go up. It will not go up thirteen thousand, because there will be that distribution as household sizes decrease.
We have some nuance to the thirty percent of households are cost burden. Do we know if those are younger folks or older folks on fixed incomes? Because I think that matters also when we're looking at the types, right? Like John keeps saying, is that, sure, we've got older folks on fixed incomes and houses, but they're large houses that don't copy maybe mobility issues or something like that.
Bryce can answer that.
So that's considering all households. That number skews heavy towards renters. Renters are overwhelming or cost burden. Owners in Bro overwhelmingly are owning their homes and pay no mortgage, right? So they are heavily insulated from these affordability issues that others are experiencing.
So, and so we're looking at eighty-two thousand dollars as a median. I came up with about two thousand dollars just on housing causes per month.
Sure.
That's, that's about what we're seeing for the average is two thousand dollars a month on rent.
But the problem is, um, there are two rental units are.
Are much more. Yeah.
So, yeah.
That's a supplying.
Yeah, but not statistically significant one case, but you do know a number of electric boat employees or single guys, as it so happens. Um, and they're getting really good salaries and they said fifty percent of their takeoff goes towards rent. I said, that's how living in Manhattan used to be.
Yeah, so that's called severe cost.
That's like, you tend to think that these are the lower income people who have that problem. That's not the case.
No, people with good jobs are struggling. One of the folks we were talking to was saying that really more is more, and what what they were talking about is that more housing gives us more choice or diversity, and it's more household price points. So again, if we for a while, you know, I criticism of, oh, well, some of these apartments are at too, too high of a price point. But there's a lot of people trying to, like, Trade Square has a humongous waitlist, and they're gonna fill it up as soon as they're CEOs. So what happens is those people are looking here, looking to come here and are gonna come here for a deal. So they're either gonna displace another household, or they're gonna move in there. So if if they can afford that, that thing, or they're so desperate to get in somewhere, they're gonna pay and then be pushed that thirty percent cost burden, probably up more because of lack of supply. And we can spend nights just to, soon, once we start this missing business project, we're gonna spend nights just talking about. And and that's why we actually went after that project with Department of Defense funding. It's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant funded project focusing on housing in Bro, doing it, right sizing it for here, not, you know, trying to shoehorn stuff and do it at the right rate, but. Yeah, we're gonna be doing some deep dives into that.
Super.
Just a little A I overview, by the way, just look this up, then Groton, right now, the average time to sell a home between closing and going vacant is twenty-five days. Which pretty means you offer for sale.
Yeah, boom.
Bought up, it takes that long. So I've been that way in California and Oregon.
Yeah.
Where you made an offer when you got to the open house or you didn't get the house, and that's where we are now.
And we have um a numbered agenda for how many apartments have recently been added.
Yeah, you had.
You're gonna ask me what it is.
Yes, we have this.
I do think that the velocity at which we're adding things will help with that affordability, because as supply increases, you'll be able to keep things. Well, I mean, if, if you have more coming online.
I mean, we got another three fifty coming online, you know.
Four hundred here in District Four, four hundred there.
Bro, faster than any other town to me. Not sure that's true or not.
No, I mean, London's doing pretty good.
London's doing, they've been doing a lot for a while. Stonington's done some big things. Recently, I think we've gotten some more momentum. But again, until building permits are pulled and hammers are swinging, we had hotel approvals, I think it was great before COVID. Now, you know, we're excited about. No hotels. You know, they spent a lot of money taking that approval through. You know, the ledges phase two was approved.
That's right.
Yeah, no building permit yet. You know, there's some of these things. As lumber costs go up and all these other pieces of the puzzle, it's just getting more and more expensive. And so part of increasing supply, part is going to be thinking about other ways to provide affordable housing, uh, and not just mercury housing. Uh, we need to, we need to look at both. Absolutely.
After you. Business person, how do you, you, like, if those sixty-four hundred units come online, your rents go down hopefully? Because. Well, I mean, it's just like you, you, the people who are investing now then are facing, it's a difficult atmosphere to you know what I mean? I I don't know.
I mean, we have seen statistically in Providence, where I live, there's been a lot of new uh rental housing development, and it has softened prices for rentals. Um, not to the point where, you know, they're plummeting by any.
Softening can slows down other developments from coming in.
To an extent, it hasn't yet. Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll end the long term, it will slow things down.
I mean, I'm just wondering if.
Only if you get to the point where it is no longer worth the return on investment.
I think when you see fifty percent vacancy rates.
So share with your permission, I think you're gonna, with your permission, I think I'll skip some slides and uh talk about May eighth. Okay, so encourage you to uh look through the the key takeaways. Again, this will be one of the major things that we present on May eighth. Um, and I want to take a few minutes uh before we close to talk about uh the plan for for that day. Um, so the public open house will be, of course, the in-person opportunity, but we are building a virtual open house uh that will be open uh from basically May ninth to the end of the month. Uh, so anyone who is not able to attend can review the same information, answer the same question. So in effect, comes uh a big online community survey um for those who are not able to attend in person. Um, it's going to be at Thrive Fifty-Five Plus in the uh large meeting room. Uh, it will be open house style, five thirty to seven thirty, uh, which means if people have a half an hour to show up, great. Uh, they can come to a few stations. Uh, if they wanna stay the whole time and see everything, that's great too. Uh, we'll have a brief presentation at uh six P M. People do not have to come to that, but it will give some context. There will be food, uh, there will be uh activities for children. Uh, so we're encouraging parents, children, bring the kids. Uh, we'll have things for the kids to do. We are encouraging if you have pre-teens or teenagers, bring them and have them do the same exercises as the, as the, as the parents. Like, we want uh all of their feedback as well. So we'll make that as uh welcoming as possible. And I did want to just give you a sense of uh the various stations that we will have up. Uh, so we will have an icebreaker as people come in at the welcome table. Uh, as it has been a tradition in Bro recently, we'll ask people where they live on a map, uh, so get that information. Uh, we'll also have uh an exit survey with all those getting to know you questions, uh, so we can continue to track who are reaching and who are not. Uh, we'll also ask people what they care most about, uh, you know, why they took time out of their evening to come. You know, there must have been something you cared about most, uh, that brought to the meeting. We wanna know what that is. And we wanna find out what the people most want to learn. So everyone will go through that icebreaker before they enter. Uh, and then we will have stations, and all these stations will be staffed by either uh one of my team uh or and or uh town staff. Uh, and we're asking all of you, if you are comfortable and interested and you would like to help us staff these stations, uh, would love your assistance, if it's something that you care a lot about, or or something you'd like to learn more about, or learn more about how your neighbors feel about these topics. Uh, would love your help in in staffing these. And so uh we'll have one section on uh communications with local government, how that could be improved, and we'll have a series of questions people can answer about that. Uh, we'll have a station on community services and facilities, where basically we'll take, it'll be like sort of a uh community budgeting, where we'll have different items that the the community could invest in, and we'll give people uh some beans, and they can vote uh where they think the town should be spending money on community uh services and facilities. We'll have an exercise on natural, cultural, and the historic resources, asking people to identify uh what areas uh are are most important to them uh for protection. And um, you know, a lot of our uh uh protected lands are accessible to the public in some ways, so asking people what sort of things would you like to do there? Uh, what investments should the town make, whether it be in trail improvement or signage or or so forth? Uh, economic development, uh, we'll be asking people to think about what types of uh businesses are missing in the town, what things they would like to see locally.
Trader Joe's.
Trader Joe's, you already know that one. For housing, uh, we'll have a matrix of different types of housing and different neighborhoods, and we'll ask people to dot votes uh where they would like to see more of certain housing types. For parks and recreation, asking people uh what, what uh recreational resources they most often use. And again, the list of investments that the town could make and uh what what they think you should be prioritizing as a community uh for sustainability. Uh, we'll be looking at a lot of uh the hazards and vulnerabilities uh to the town, whether that be sea level rise or or flooding or heat, uh, and asking people where they've seen uh these be a problem in the community today, where they expect things to be a problem in the future. And again, there are a list of things that the community could do to uh mitigate this or invest uh in things, and we're gonna ask people to prioritize. And then uh finally, transportation, uh, very similarly, uh, asking people uh how they get around today and uh how they think the town should prioritize investments transportation, whether that be increased transit, sidewalks, uh roadways, et cetera. Um, so again, all those uh same questions will be up on uh the the website, uh, will be functionally serve as um uh a community survey, but what we like to do is split those surveys into the different topics, so that we're not presenting people with a massive survey that deals with all of these things. So, you know, if all you really care about is housing, economic development, you can take those surveys uh and uh not the others. Uh, but obviously, if you're gung ho and you wanna answer them all, you can answer them all. Uh, so our hope is that uh based on, you know, everything that I presented to you today and the information that we start receiving uh through the open house and the virtual open house, we will start working with you to develop, we think of the big pillars, the major themes of the plan that uh is going, that plan is going to be built around. And uh so we will come back to you shortly after uh all this, probably in June, uh, to talk about what those key themes are going to be for the plan. So. Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
Always have some kind of document for review by the end of the year, so we have.
And again, when Jeff is asking if folks wanna help a little bit, planning development staff will be there, staff and forces will be there at all these boards. Love to have your assistance if you wanna just come and cover for a little while, listen, or you're gonna help chime in when people are uh coming around. We appreciate, you know, whether it's an issue that you feel strongly about, or one that you know nothing about, wanna stand there as a fly on the wall and listen to some of the feedback that we're getting. Because again, community engagement, feedback we get, get from folks, it is not, um, it's not a perfect statistically significant path that um, you know, most of the people that we hear from, a lot of us know them on first name basis, you know, but they are still members of the community, and we wanna hear from them, as well as the folks that don't nearly hear from them. We're trying to just reach out and and see what the variety of issues that we're hearing from.
No, I'm definitely interested.
Great.
Sure.
See a bunch of other people too. Thanks a lot.
Absolutely. Thank you for your patience. I know it was a big presentation. Uh, really appreciate the conversation.
Anything else at this point?
Tutor?
Okay, great, thank you.
Most, thank you so much.
All right, thanks for coming today.
Absolutely.